Well, welcome to the public forum today. Now, we've got Wendy here, our most important committee member. And so, thank you very much for everybody coming. This is the public's opportunity to come and talk to the council and express your thoughts on any matter that you wish. We're going to ask if you're a group to try and keep within 10 minutes, and if you're an individual to try and keep within five. After that time, the committee will be given the opportunity to ask questions so we can really clarify what your issues are. This committee can't make any decisions, but we can think about where the next action should occur and where it should be referred to another standing committee. But really, our role here is just to listen and to consider what you have to tell us. So, first off is what we'll do is have apologies. So, we've got apologies from our mayor, and we have one from Sid Brown for lateness. And do we have any other apologies? Hello, Lee.
Good day.
Okay, so I'll move the apologies. Thank you, councillor Staines, that's lovely. Then we have our confirmation of the minutes. Now, the minutes did come out some time ago. They covered the issues of the Aramauana Conservation Group, the rodeo. Sylvia Philcotts had an issue that she put in by way of letter, and there was problem gambling. So, is anybody happy to move that the minutes be moved? Thank you very much, councillor McTavish and councillor Hudson. And if there's no changes to those, then I'll also put them, all those in favour?
Aye.
Those against, and that's carried. Thank you so much. Right, oh, sorry. And the other one is confirmation of the agenda. And we have our agenda here now. Do we need to change the order? So, we'll change the order. Keeping Diddy and active are having trouble getting their computers to work, so they would like to go last, so if that's okay. We'll put Keeping Diddy and active last, and the other two will move forward. So, with that small change, I'll move the agenda in a second. Thank you councillor Wilson. And all those in favour?
Aye.
And those against, and that's lovely. Okay, so our first speaker today is Green Island Combined Sports Group, and we have Mr Wylie and Miss John Moyle, if they would like to come forward. Okay, so you've got approximately 10 minutes to talk to us about what you have in mind?
Yeah, we will be 12.
I'm sure we can forgive 12.
Hi, my name's John Moyle, and I think you've been talking to me?
Have a seat if you wish, yeah.
Hi. 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 Donedin, a vibrant cosmopolitan city, renowned internationally for its university. It also hums with a diverse mix of commerce, industry and agriculture. This bustling city with its can-do heritage draws visitors from...
Well, we've all welcomed it.
...to view the many local attractions and experience the Kiwi hospitality. However, a city's heartbeat is generated by the people who live within and contribute to its continued growth and stability. This video is about some of those people. Just southeast of Donedin are the suburbs of Green Island, Abbotsford, Concord, Waldronville, Brighton and Fairfield. These are testimony to community spirit and are continuing to expand with building development proceeding at pace to provide homes for families and their children. Sport and fitness have always played a major role in the social lives of these communities, and in 1974, the Sunnyvale Sports Centre...
Right, it looks good from here, anyway.
Right, okay.
Really good.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, it was working when we... just before the meeting.
Oh dear. Well, if you feel like I'm just speaking to what you had in mind, then we could continue in that manner.
Sure. This is so much better.
Yeah. I recommend this. Would you... I can just throw up the laptop, if that's... I'll hold that up if that's any good.
Just... I don't know. It's not good. It's not good.
Let it go. We get the story.
Okay. Unfortunately, I stopped it. I might have had a fast forward as well.
I just... Yeah. Donedin, a vibrant cosmopolitan city, renowned internationally for its university. It also hums with a diverse mix of commerce, industry and agriculture. This bustling city with its can-do heritage draws visitors from all over the world to view the many local attractions and experience the Kiwi hospitality. However, a city's heartbeat is generated by the people who form the communities that live within and contribute to its continued growth and stability. This video is about some of those people. Just southeast of Donedin are the suburbs of Green Island, Abbotsford, Concord, Waldronville, Brighton and Fairfield. These are testimony to community spirit and are continuing to expand with building development proceeding at pace to provide homes for families and their children. Sport and fitness have always played a major role in the social lives of these communities, and in 1974, the Sunnyvale Sports Centre was constructed to provide a safe, purpose-built resource where young and not-so-young could meet, compete and continue to nurture the community spirit.
There was actually the six clubs involved. I was right back there with the... I was representing one of the combined sports bodies. That's when it was formed, the local clubs. All the clubs got together in a deputation to council, and from that was formed the Green Island Sports Body.
It has served these communities well over the years, but now, 38 years on, with membership and district growth continuing, there is a need to expand and develop this facility. To this end, a working party for the Green Island Combined Sports Bodies was formed to drive this phase of the development forward. All of these members are local people who grew up and played sport here as children, and now continue to support and develop the centre for future generations. The centre hosts a growing number of sports and recreational activities, including provincial and national sports events. It also attracts other clubs from around Donedin to play on the extensive pitches against that beautiful backdrop of Saddle Hill. Here, youngsters will also get coaching from the dedicated adult members, and they'll take away not just improved sport skills, but will learn life skills too, such as teamwork, fair play and consideration for others. Many of these senior members also played here as children, and when at the end of their playing careers, have continued to support the various sports with training and coaching.
I've been involved in this thing for so many years, and the number of people, children, that sat off, you're Mr Graham, mister. And until they really get to know me and to call me Peter, but it's the respect that you get from children, and it grows through. And there's nothing better than to meet somebody that's come through a sporting body.
The centre has produced several regional, national and international players, too.
I was born and bred in Green Island, and wasn't too far away from Sunnyvale itself. I never started playing football till I was 10, so when I was 10, I went down to Green Island Football Club and enrolled for the first time. I'm still affiliated with Green Island Coaching, their premier women's team, with another couple of coaches, so I'm normally down there on a Thursday night, helping coach the premier girls' team down there. And I think, you know, with the growth of Fairfield and the number of kids that are living out that way now, I think it's an enormous asset for Green Island Fairfield area.
With the ongoing growth of activities at the centre, over the years, its function has evolved into a much broader community role, a place for families and friends from all over Donedin to meet and play together or just socialise. However, the existing structure and facilities are now inadequate and extremely outdated. So, a plan to upgrade the building is proposed, which will not only ensure continued service to the community, but will offer 21st century facilities to cater for the increasing range of functions taking place here. These changes will provide a resource that will be able to continue serving communities from all over Donedin and even further afield for many, many years to come. Many local trades and businesses have supported the sports centre over the years, and some have devoted huge amounts of their time, ordinated services at favourable rates or even free of charge. Families, too, have served through the generations and have continued to do so, some through trying times.
That one up there, that's Steve Graham-Lens run, that's my boy. He played senior cricket, he was... he developed into quite a good spin bowler, and played in the senior level. And then he developed a sore leg, unfortunately, down here. He played two years senior cricket after those two operations, and then he died of a tumour in the brain. He left $5,000 to the cricket club, and he was a young married man. Anyway, the cricket club saw fit for name and lounge after him, and brought tables and chairs. From the point of view of youth respecting the club, well, he won't get much better than that. So, that's what a cricket club meant to that lad.
So, it is clear that the heart of the community is driven by the people and what they personally put into it. And there is certainly a strong heart here, and the improved facilities will ensure that it will continue to serve the community, both in sport and socially. It will also continue to teach our youngsters of today the value of community spirit, teamwork and fair play, so they in turn may become first-class players in our community of tomorrow.
Hey, Ian Smith here, just wishing you guys... Green Island Cricket Club, of course, one of the most famous cricket clubs in the country, giving us the terrific Otago, Zealand players over the years. All the best for that new development at Sunnyvale, it's sports complex, I know it'll be a beauty when you finally achieve your goal. Good luck with all the process along the way.
Just wishing Sunnyvale all the very best towards day three development, a really exciting time for the Green Island community and, of course, the Green Island Cricket Club.
Here I am, a lovely sunny day in Donedin, don't we? Just love it down here. Hey, Green Island Cricket Club, all the best. I know you're raising funds, and you've got a lot on your plate. All the best, make it work.
Well, is there anything you want to communicate with us verbally to add to the mix of what we need to know?
Well, conscious we've had probably 15 minutes, but I think the main thing that we're bringing in is that this is no longer a sports club for key sports, it's actually a community centre. And that everyone's on board with that and why, and it's going to do a whole lot for out there. It's a wide-ranging facility, you know, lines, clubs, tennis clubs, just community organisations, but of course underpinned by four reasonably strong and growing sports clubs as well, which we think's important. So, very, very exciting. And the good news is, is that we're going to be holding some open days in the facility itself. We'll play this, so I invite you all out to come and see the real version. Obviously, it's... it looks a bit better when you can see what it's all about.
Okay, thank you. Got any questions, councillor Wilson?
I just wonder if you're going to upload that on YouTube or something?
It's there now.
It is there now, so we can go and see it and...
Yes, you can, yeah. Well, I mean, it's very powerful, if you can get good viewing...
Yeah.
And good sound. It's very powerful, there's quite a bit of emotion there. I still can't not get choked up when I watch it a bit. But, so we want to try and get it out in the big germ, dark, big TV screen, lots of sound to the people, and then play it regularly, because that tune, when you hear that tune at the start, for me now, I don't have to say anything, I just know it means the facility, and it'll become quite catchy. So, we're going to advertise that big time. We're hoping just to capture as many people as we can, though, with the big, powerful viewing first.
Councillor Hudson, and then councillor Collins.
Graham, you explained in the video and at the end there that there are four sports that are actively there. You just explain to us the four sports, please, although I think we should have picked them up from the video.
No problem, now, happy to...
And then I wanted to ask a question about rhythmic gymnastics. Another gymnastics club have been looking for a home around the Donedin area for some time, and I wondered whether you had the... any comment to make on the possible involvement of other sports who mightn't be those four?
Yeah, happy to. So, the anchor sports, football, and to be fair to say, the Green Island Junior and Senior Football Club will be one of the largest in our area and a growing membership. The juniors, we got a report the other day, and there's 299 kids playing for the Green Island Junior Football Club alone, 26 teams. Then you've got squash, and squash is a growing membership, and one of the key things happening in this development is that where the clubrooms are now, it's going to be changed or turned into, or actually calling it a small gymnasium, because that reminds everyone that it's there for the community, but it also will have a wall in the middle that can be retracted to make a double squash court, which, if it's not the first, it's one of the first in the area. So, we'll go from two squash courts to four, but the ability to have a doubles as well, but also the ability to move the wall and have a smaller gymnasium for the community. Then you've got the Bemington Club, and they are particularly benefiting from the new... oh, there'll be new lighting in the gym plus a new floor. The membership's, you know, small, but probably okay for Bemington standards, but it is growing as well. And then we have cricket. So, we've got the senior and the junior cricket club based out there, too, and as you've seen near the end, it's a very... it's got a great profile and very well-regarded cricket club as well. So, they're the four key ones, but we're certainly in talks with other sports clubs around the community, who, you know, it's a well-publicised problem where there's so many sports halls and clubs all needing their own maintenance, where they could all come to our facility and it could be the home of sport here as well. We've actually had a meeting facilitated, I think, by the council with the local gymnastics people. I've got a couple of kids in the gymnastics club, so I know the state of their facilities, and my take on unofficially would be that we're definitely an option for them to actually look at this facility with a big add-on gym on it as being one of their options, but obviously that's outside our hands, except that we'd welcome them with open hands, definitely. It'd be a great, great concept, great idea to bring them out.
So, with the gymnastics, we'd be looking at an extension of the gym, probably approximately 1,012 square metres. But what we did say at the meeting we had, the other infrastructure's already there, up to 10 changing rooms, easily segregated into men's and women's, lounge, bar, meeting rooms. So, the infrastructure for those sports plus a large car park is already there. So, we're hoping that, you know, council are looking at two or three options, that we are, you know, high on the list of options for gym sports, because as Graham stated, we have spoken to various other local clubs, social clubs, Provis, to get the building used during the day, whereas most sports clubs are empty. So, that is the big, the big changing thing, and for some people to get their head around that it's not a sports centre anymore, it'll be a community centre. So, yeah, we're really taking all comers, to be honest.
And councillor Collins?
Well done on the video, it's very good. And for those of us that can remember when it opened, but just on your list of, if you are updating some time, of the odd identities out there, there's one that missed the cut, an occasional cyclist and an average rugby and cricketer, and above-average jeweler and city councillor, might make it next time.
Thank you.
Who would that be?
Could possibly come in.
Thank you for that. And councillor Witherall?
Yeah, gentlemen, two parts. Obviously, in preparing your project, you have assessed the needs of the community. Have in your assessment identified any surplus facilities in the immediate area that the council could think about? That's the first question I've got to you.
Sorry, what was it?
Any facilities in the area that, as you've assessed the needs of the community of where you want to go, are there any facilities in the community that are likely now to be surplus or not really used anywhere or underrated?
Yes, there's a possibility, well, two come to mind. The tennis club have shown favour of moving to Sunnyvale, which they currently don't have any facilities as such, but they do have probably quite a valuable piece of land on the main street, and it would just be a matter of getting four courts put down on Sunnyvale somewhere. And the current community hall on Howden Street, which I believe is not overly well-used, but if Taekwondo come to Sunnyvale, that would be one of the biggest users, and also there's an indoor ladies' Bemington, which is played during the day. So, I know your council and here are lots of these facilities, and I mean, the prime example is the Wakawati Community Centre, where, you know, you've got rid of some of those smaller, older venues. So, those are two that come to mind, but within our area, there are lots of smaller clubs which are used one day a week, one day a fortnight, and the community board actually facilitated a meeting only two weeks ago to see if some of those resources could be shared amongst themselves, you know, where the clubs are sitting there lots of times. And prime examples in our area, Provis, which go to a hall which is far too small, but they don't go anywhere else when you've got probably eight different venues sitting empty for the day. So, that meeting went well, and that got a lot of people talking to each other about how to use those resources better. So, we're continuing that with Sunnyvale and trying to actually compile a list of all of our social, sporting, cultural organisations within the area, and that we can, you know, jump on each other's back and help each other out using those facilities and sharing some costs.
That's very good.
Thank you. Madam Chair, a second question goes, thank you, John, for coming well prepared, because that's what I would expect you to have done, so that's well done. Second one is, are you, at this time, but you may not be able to, want to, able to comment on the quantum that you'll be seeking in the market to fund the facility? You may not want to, gentlemen, and I don't want to preempt the position that you may be developing, but if you were comfortable...
Should we? I don't know.
No, no. If you feel like...
Oh, I don't feel comfortable at all. Yeah. We want to... we've been keeping everything reasonably quiet, and you haven't seen us for a while, because particularly myself, I'm personal, I want to get my ducks in a row, get the foundations sorted before we go out. Don't want to go out too early, then have to retract and stuff like that, but we're that close to really wanting to nail it. We're talking days to weeks, not weeks to months. So, we've got a budget here, that's one of our key people is Richard Johnson, you would have seen the ABL logo if it had been working. ABL have done a lot of work for the council, you know, credibility, they know what they're doing. So, we've come up with a costing of $1.45. We've got a, through the support of the council, we've got a bank loan, we've got cash in the bank from the facility itself and the sports clubs. So, we're going out to our people, the community, for something that we think's totally achievable, so like 10 bucks a month for 10 months from a family, $100 a month for 10 months from a business, you know, and we think with the emotion behind it, we think, well, that's not a big challenge, to be honest. And then, of course, we're talking with lotteries and community trusts and those, like, they've been really, really supportive, because one thing they've really pointed out, they don't get that many opportunities to support a community facility, they get lots of opportunities to support a sports club, and they'd rather do the community ones. So, they, you know, they've been very, very helpful.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, gentlemen, it's great, absolutely superb.
Councillor Eklund?
That was actually my question, but I'll just take it one stage further if I can, and that is, do you have any sort of idea as to what you're perhaps looking for from council by way of support? I'm not talking perhaps dollar terms, but just generally speaking.
We, I was just going to say, despite the, you know, the financial backing for council over a period, it's been brilliant, the support and knowledge from Hamish and various other guys support us in the right direction, the likes of the community trust and lotteries, we've been staying in touch with those guys for five years, so they're really familiar where we're at, and the expertise of the council staff, as I say, Hamish really comes to mind...
Andrew.
And Andrew and so forth, and so those expertise with being in touch, and so when we come to these guys to present and asking for large sums of money, they're well aware of where we started and what we've come from, and we have actually achieved a few minor upgrades already to the place. So, yeah, the community amount of money we're looking for is basically $200,000, and we're going out at a rule of thumb as 1,000 families, $100 each, and 100 businesses for 1,000. And this video's been made available for the last week or so, and some of these pictures you'll see around, and the talk locally at the local supermarket is pretty positive. So, you know, we're going to kick the thing off big time in the next few weeks.
Can I just endorse that, too? I've had a lot of the one-on-one interactions with the council, Andrew Lowney and Hamish and supporting staff, never done anything like this before, and it's fantastic. This is all new, and those guys, that team, that department you've got there is just, it makes it easy, you know? I mean, it's still a big challenge in that, but it's very, very good. I think if you don't get to experience that, you don't realise what the council can actually do. Can't speak highly enough of them, and it's not paid.
Well, thank you very much. Is there any other questions? If not, I'm going to thank you very much for coming here. It's really good to keep us informed, and I think this is one of the ones that we're just going to keep watching brief of, and good luck and well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Well, ask Diane Yalden to come forward.
I don't need the laptop.
I don't need the laptop, but I don't need the screen.
Good.
Madam Chair, I've got two items to discuss. The first one on the agenda is straight hats, however, this has far greater ramifications than it appears. I'd like to take the ones that public forums do.
Diane, would you be more comfortable sitting down?
Do you have the microphone?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And...
Where's my...
Sorry about that.
I can shout at the kids, but I can't shout at the DCC.
Oh, please not to.
Okay, I can? Right, okay. The first thing I want to say is that I've got Appendix F of your standing orders, which describe public forum, and as you're well aware, it says 10 minutes for a group. I was on the agenda to speak third, two groups ahead of me, so I imagined I would be speaking at approximately 20 past. It's now half past, and I'm second on the agenda. This doesn't seem appropriate to me for either the council's time or submitter's time, and I'd like to suggest to you that audiovisual presentations, if somebody wants to make them, that they give that reference to the council, so the council and councillors can do that in their own time, because I think the virtue of public forum is actual dialogue face-to-face. I can do lots of written submissions, but this is the only opportunity I get to speak to you. The government staff knows, I've actually been very concerned about the kind of public forum that you have. This was changed by resolution to this particular single public forum originally after the standing committees had met, so that meant it was impossible to look at the agenda for a committee meeting and submit to an agenda item. Okay, it was already happened. Your standing orders, appendix, I know they're not... Your standing orders, appendix, I know they're not actually standing orders because this isn't the meeting of the council, but Appendix F, if you have a look at it, it still talks about public forum being themed, which when this was passed by the council, basically meant the council was going to tell members of the public what they were going to talk about. Okay, the themes have been dropped and that's a good thing, but they're still there in the rules. So I really, really would like, and the other issue about public forum being this single meeting, is it's totally ridiculous if it's supposed to keep people away from standing committee. Because as you yourself, madam chair, told me, deputations are possible. So if I really want to come to a standing committee, I could apply to make a deputation and speak to an agenda item anyway. So I really do ask you all once again to look at your public forum and I would like the Dunedin City Council to be in alignment with most, virtually all local bodies in New Zealand, but they have a public forum that matters, that counts, because they have a public forum if it's necessary, if anybody wants to speak before a standing committee. That's when it matters, that's when it counts. You get lots of activists who wait till the bulldozers arrive. Okay, activists are sensible if they're at the committee meeting when the agenda item first comes up. And I don't like having my time wasted with audio visual presentations when you could get that information referred and referred to it. I think that, I think that councillor Thompson actually asked a question of the previous submitter, what do you want from the council? And when I make submissions, I always figure out what I want. Because this isn't an advertising campaign, right? It's, and it's not looking for money. There's funding application processes and there's ways of promoting things, but this is a matter of something the council is going to decide on. So it's, I think, you know, that there needs to be consideration of how public forum is going to work.
Can I just, is that?
I don't, that's pretty much all I've got to say about public forums. Going to get on to stray cats.
I was just wondering if Sandy could just take this opportunity to, because we're doing a review of our standing.
I can catch up with Sandy later on because I'm actually, I'm actually late for something else. So I'd like to go on stray cats, because stray cats is actually quite complicated. You may have read in the paper that there's actually an oversupply of cats and kittens. And this is actually quite worrying because the SPCA has a no-kill policy. Now, they may have a no-kill policy because they don't like killing animals because that's not what their organisation is about. They may also have a no-kill policy because euthanising cats is actually quite expensive. Take your cat to the vet, it will cost you quite a bit of money. As far as I know, the council doesn't consider collecting stray cats and disposing of them as responsibility. I haven't had time to check that out with the council, but I have a friend who lives in an inner-city flat and she said she was besieged with cats and she did actually ring up the council to see, they were strays, they were feral. And I mean, I just want to make clear, I'm not, Gareth Morgan's been quite controversial. I have two pet cats, they're, they're totally domesticated. Feral cats are, in comparison to pet cats, feral cats are like wolves out of dogs. A feral cat would eat my cats if it could. They're actually not kind of nice little pussycats. And the thing, the thought that you don't get feral cats in the city is entirely a crack. If you have, that's the other issue, if you have a lot of rubbish and food rubbish around, you will get feral cats in the city. And the way the cats work is the dominant one eats all the others basically, they're territorial. And I think the university students in shared flats often see a little kitten and think it's cute and feed it. And they're not going to, they sex it and they're going to leave it. So I think Dunedin, oh, the other issue with the rubbish, and this is related to the cats as well, is that you've got a plague of rats in the city. So this is actually quite health hazard. I think the council is the agency that should be dealing with both the rats and the cats. Council probably does have some responsibility to deal with the rats. The friend who managed to deal with her feral cat in her inner-city flat, what she had to do was get a pest contractor to catch the cat in a trap, which was a humane trap, which I think he borrowed from the SPCA, take it to rural land and shoot it. Euthanasying a cat is actually quite expensive and a bullet is very cheap. You can't fire a rifle off rural land, but I'm pretty sure you can use an air pistol. And I don't see any reason why people shouldn't shoot feral cats and rats. It's a very good way of getting rid of them. I know this is a city, but I actually lived on a rural place and I'm familiar with these problems. So I actually wonder whether you should consider the possibility of having a curfew in the city between about two and three AM when all the rats and the feral cats come out. And anybody who's minding their own business shouldn't be there, shouldn't be wandering around anyway. Anybody who's got a pet cat should have it locked up inside and have people go and shoot all these cats and rats. And if they see people dumping rubbish, I don't recommend shooting them, but I do recommend stopping them. I was talking to the woman who's the manager of the butterfly shop, the hospice shop, and she gets bags of goodies dropped in the, in the parking, the access lane behind the shop. And these bags of goodies include putrefying meat and used syringes and rubbish, which is actually very dangerous. And there's lots of other rubbish, as you're probably aware, disposed of, disposed of, dumped all around the city. Some of it's food. People don't want to pay for disposal, they don't want to pay for rubbish tax and the whole problem is actually all related. And then on top of this, you're getting people wandering around the city after pubs and clubs close, just bashing people for fun. So I think that, this sounds a very strange idea, basically having a posse looking after the Dunedin and the small areas and getting rid of rubbish cats, rats and annoying people. But I think you really should look into something similar. Because, I mean, hepatitis C is, I mean, we were, the pastor of the matter was talking about this being a vibrant city and I bet you at night it's vibrant with rats and cats. And also talking about sporting opportunities. And here's a wonderful opportunity for Dunedin to be sort of top with marksmanship. And the other thing is, there's a student volunteer army organised by Darlene Thompson. I think this would be very carrot the building for these young men to be, or young women of course, I mustn't be sexist, to be out at night looking after the city and shooting the occasional cat and rat. Okay, so that's probably me.
Thank you, thank you very much. You brought up some very interesting ones.
I've probably made it in less than five minutes too.
Can I just see if there's anyone who wants to answer, are you happy to answer a few questions?
Yeah, sure.
So councillor Butcher.
Diane, do you think that we should put some money in the annual plan and hire a pied piper?
If you can find one. But, but the thing is, that would actually be ethically unsound because he would be taking our problem and putting it, yes, or she, he'd be taking our problem and putting it somewhere else. I think the best thing is instead of giving the rats and the cats and the rubbish dumpsters to somebody else, we could lead them somewhere and then catch them. Well, I think we should actually look after them ourselves, take care of it ourselves. Well, rats just should die. Because, I mean, actually this is serious, madam chair, because we've had a very warm winter and if these rats, these rats will come inside for warmth, they're disease vectors, serious disease vectors, and the ones that survive over winter will breed profusely in spring. So then the problem will just continue.
Have you got any other questions? If not, this particular councillor?
A lot of those issues come under the Health Act and under the Environment, but I'm happy to get some responses to those issues. I think we'll find that the staff already do deal with the rubbish issue and quite clearly in the book, powers under the Health Act for that.
Right, so like if we maybe leave this for the chair and the deputy of planning environment to look at the environmental health aspects and we can see if there's anything that can be done to do with rubbish, food rubbish, tracking rats, cats and cats in general.
I think the message is that I'm, what do they do? Because I'm sure that they do something.
Yep. But thank you for raising the issue, much appreciated. Thank you for coming. Okay, so we'll have our final speaker, which is Getting Dunedin Active, and Ruth Zynert is going to come and speak to us.
I think we're going to just make a last, just actually attempt it.
We'll see if it works, yeah.
Could get shot.
If not, you're at the slides on handout, there's not quite enough, so we can. So with the, where do the public, do the public, do the public, do the public, do the public? Really?
So while you're preparing, the previous speaker was also talking about the public forum and the councillors are aware that our public, our standing orders have been reviewed. So any thoughts about coming and speaking directly to committees can be referred to that review in due course. Right, are you ready to fire ahead, are you? Okay, well, thank you very much, you've got ten minutes and please tell us what you want to.
Thank you. I'd like to start by saying thank you actually. So my name's Ruth Zynert, I'm the project manager for Getting Dunedin Active. And I'd like to thank you for your ongoing support of Getting Dunedin Active and Move Me. We now have eighteen Getting Dunedin Active partners, so as a collective we're growing, which is quite unusual when it comes to collaborative partnerships. And those partners are continuing to do what they've always done well. And that's working towards our vision, which you see out there, which is all Dunedin residents living active, healthy and enjoyable lifestyles. And Move Me, the promotional campaign, is continuing to gain momentum. We've got lots of great work underway and the potential for that campaign for Dunedin is really enormous. Both of those projects are reliant on your financial support, so thank you. Today, I'm not here though to actually talk about what we're doing as part of Getting Dunedin Active, I'm here to possibly challenge the way that you might think about what we're doing. Because the benefits of physical activity are often underestimated. This is called the human capital model and it's based on over five hundred pieces of published research. And it was developed to show the spectrum of benefits of physical activity, both to an individual and to an economy. Each capital that you see there refers to a set of outcomes that underpin our wellbeing and success. So physical capital, for instance, refers to the physical effects of exercise and being physically active. That's the one that we tend to focus on the most and the one that you probably know best. So it refers to the effects on things like cardiovascular fitness, body weight, heart disease, cancer risk, for example. Emotional capital and individual capital refer in the most part to benefits of physical activity that are seen and felt at an individual level. So emotional capital includes things like improvements in self-esteem, mood, stress levels, depression rates, lots of mental health indicators. And individual capital refers to some more perhaps intrinsic factors, such as time management, goal-setting, life satisfaction, intrinsic motivation. But what I'm really going to focus on a bit more today is the last three, social capital, intellectual capital and financial capital and the way that those directly link to the community outcomes that we have for Dunedin. So if we consider intellectual capital with increasing levels of physical activity, we see improvements in some of these things, school engagement, memory and learning, actual brain structure and function, concentration, attention and impulse control, academic performance and ultimately educational attainment. We know, for example, that taking all other factors into consideration, an active child will score better on achievement tests than his inactive peers. And the links there between those three community outcomes are quite clear. So all contributing to a thriving and diverse economy, a vibrant and creative city and a city of learning. Social capital refers to the social effects of an active community. So again, with increasing physical activity, we see improvements in these types of outcomes, social networks and positive relationships, social inclusion and acceptance, leadership, trust and teamwork, civic participation, equity, crime reduction and a sense of community cohesion and safety and support. All of which again contributing, and one of them's dropped off the bottom there, to a safe and healthy city, a supportive community and a vibrant and creative city. And last but not least, and financial capital is one of the ones that many of us that work within public health and other sectors that don't necessarily think about the bottom line or haven't traditionally, are having to think about more often and it's the dollar value of what we're doing. As we become more active, we see, and this is all evidence-based, we see improvements in income and job success and innovation, productivity and job performance, morale, commitment and turnover and reductions in absenteeism and presenteeism. If you're not familiar with presenteeism, it simply means, as it sounds, being present in body at work, but not necessarily in mind. And those again contribute to a thriving and diverse economy, a vibrant and creative city and a city of learning. So ultimately, you can see, just to summarise slightly, physical activity does a whole lot more than just create good health, which is what we tend to focus on. It contributes to leadership, productivity and innovation, lowers depression and crime. It increases educational achievement and income levels and through all these things as well, it generates return to business. Just to digress briefly and to look at another perspective, it's also worth considering, actually I'll come back to that, the cost of physical inactivity at a local level. So this is a report from 2010 and it estimated those costs for New Zealand as a whole for that year and for the three regions that commissioned the report, which were Auckland, Wellington and Waikato. So the cost of physical inactivity for the 2010 year for New Zealand as a whole, for example, was one point four billion dollars. And so the direct costs of physical activity obviously are borne by our health system, but the indirect costs such as loss of productivity and potential earning and the social costs of disease and disability impact us and cost us at an individual level, at a local level. That's a really detailed report and we don't have time to really go through that today and the methodology, as you can imagine, is really complex, but have an electronic copy of it if anyone is interested in reading more about those costs, I'm very happy to circulate it. So if we just go back and relook at the community outcomes for Dunedin, when we take all six of those capital outcomes into consideration, physical activity actually contributes and can contribute more to eight out of our nine community outcomes. Which begs the question, I guess, what, what can we do as Dunedin City Council and as the city of Dunedin to make the most of the available evidence and strengthen the work that Getting Dunedin Active are doing? In a nutshell, we need to reintegrate physical activity into everyday life. And to do that, we need to think about it at a local government level with every strategy and policy that we develop. So we currently already have a physical activity strategy, Getting Dunedin Active, and we have a lot of work that happens through our Parks and Recreation team, which obviously contributes to physical activity through the work that they do around maintaining and developing our green spaces and play spaces and sport and rec facilities and ensuring that they are accessible. And we're doing it as well through your contribution and support of the Move Me campaign. But those things again really just factor into that physical capital. So if we want to make the most of the available evidence and look at how physical activity contribute to all those other capital outcomes, particularly to our economy, then there are some additional ways that we can do it. And perhaps more important ways as well. And that's through having an economic development strategy that really recognises the effect of physical activity on our economy, because the evidence is there to support that. And a simple way that we do that is through supporting the implementation of workplace wellness programmes across the city. We do it through our transport strategy by ensuring that that prioritises making Dunedin a place that it's easy to commute and to move around within and around the city actively. We do it through the social wellbeing strategy by ensuring that we are well aware of the social effects of physical activity and having a strategy that supports communities that value physical activity. And we do it through city planning. So at the moment, our world doesn't actually make it particularly easy to be active a lot of the time, but we can address that through our social plan, through our spatial plan, through things like connected streets and again considering active commuting as part of our spatial plan. Just to close today, I want you to just take a wee minute to imagine something. I'm going to show you the Getting Dunedin Active vision again, but I've added- I'm going to show you the Getting Dunedin Active vision again, but I've added to it. And I'm going to ask you to take a wee minute just to read it and absorb it. So, just imagine our potential as a city, if that was truly reflected in our communities. Because there's one common factor that can lead us down that path and it's not complex and it's not hard to integrate either. Physical activity really unleashes human potential and that's what drives individuals and economies forward. And we miss our biggest opportunity if we choose to ignore some of the evidence that we now have. Thank you for your time today. On behalf of Getting Dunedin Active, I would like to just say that we are really happy to explore any of this in any more detail with you. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And we do have a question from councillor Butcher. So, you happy to take questions?
Absolutely.
Um, can you go, when you talked about the economic development strategy, you said, and I got some of it, but I wanted to write it down, you said, we can do this by supporting workplace programmes or something?
Workplace wellness programmes.
Workplace wellness programmes. And are you saying that that's council helping fund those programmes or just morally supporting and maybe doing it ourselves in council or how would you say?
Definitely it's a good idea to get our own house in order. I think it's important when it comes to walking the torch.
There's the CEO over there. I'm sure he'd be keen to get them all moving.
Workplace wellness programmes actually Dunedin cost a lot of money, but the workplace as a setting for physical activity and for any kind of health promotion is really valuable because we spend so much time at work. So, and there's a lot more evidence coming to light around the effects of just sitting, physically sitting. Yeah, so workplaces...
I'd be really interested in that report if you wouldn't mind sending me through.
Absolutely, yeah.
Electronically or have you got it in hard copy?
I haven't, I've only got it electronically.
Is it about a more hard copy?
I'm not sure. I can find out.
Could you? I prefer it in hard copy.
Yeah, I'll find out.
Read it in bed then. Thank you. So, have you got any other questions for councillors? If not, thank you very much for coming and do keep keeping in touch with us and keeping us motivated.
Okay, thank you. I have got a tangible reminder.
Oh, good.
For some of you, just so you don't forget us. Frisbees is probably not enough for all, but I've also got my business card on the back, so.
Perfect. It couldn't get better. Thank you. Okay, and I'll... That will conclude the public forum and I'll declare the meeting closed. Thank you.